... planning and zoning commission meeting. Since Auburn didn't make the final game, this meeting probably takes three hours. So, don't fret unless you're a Florida fan. But seriously, thank everybody for being here tonight. We appreciate your input and attendance tonight. First item we have on the agenda is our consent agenda. Are there any...
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, could I ask to add an item on the old business?
Sure.
The old business?
Sure.
Just to talk about a subdivision case we've seen in the past.
Okay. What item is that?
It'll be SD 24.20.
Okay. And we've also got an informal presentation of old business by the Richmans. Did I write down anything else on that? Remember the down by Gambino's?
Same.
Is that the same one?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't recognize the letters.
Yep.
Good, I'm glad you... Okay. All right. Moving along, are there any items that... Are there any questions from the consent agenda from the last meeting? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
If you'd like, we have a further consent agenda. It's the minutes from last month and then also one utility review. If you want to see the location of that utility review before you approve the consent agenda. You guys have nothing?
Yeah, I was gonna actually do... I've always been kinda questioning since we restarted doing these if I should do the approval of the minutes in the consent agenda or not. But if you have anything that you want to add on the C Spire, that would be fine.
The approval of minutes is included in the... On the consent agenda.
Okay, go ahead then. If you want to go ahead on the 115211, that would be fine.
So, this is utility review 25.06 for C Spire. It is approximately 47,000 linear feet of directional board fiber along the route's outline on the map below. Here is an aerial view. We just lost connection just for a little bit, but in general, it's...
Just a quick question. Is anybody's monitor working?
Mine's not.
They should be coming back online right about now. Say, our monitor's... Our monitor's bleeped out here for about three seconds and are back online.
Negative.
Negative on that.
I think mine's warming up. I can't tell if it is.
Well, there's only a couple of slides and I can give you a detailed description of where this is. So, this is the... Pecan Avenue is going to be about the center line of where this work is to begin, extending up north around Pier Pecan, just short of White Avenue, down to South Mobile Street, and then southerly at the terminus of where Liberty Street, South School Street ends. The one small section down off of Echo Lane where it comes in. There is nothing out of the ordinary other than our general comments for this utility review. We do have our 12 standard approval with condition comments listed here. Staff recommends, does recommend approval with the following conditions. Once this is approved by our planning commission, then the building permit itself is reviewed by our building department and our right-of-way inspectors for conformance with all applicable codes. If there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for staff at this time?
This is the only... The only other item that we have on the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mike. In that case, at this time, if there are no questions or concerns, I will accept a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, which also includes the minutes from our March meeting.
We approve the consent agenda as presented.
I've got a motion to approve the consent agenda as... As... Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the regular agenda and old business.
Okay. So, we... Back in December's planning commission, we brought to you a minor subdivision that was located on Laurel, kinda behind the old Baron's Inn property. It was a two-lot subdivision with a requirement to install sidewalks. There were some city projects going on at that time and we recommended to install sidewalks. You approved that. It went that way. Fortunately, that minor subdivision has 120 days to act and record a final plat. So, the application is expired. A new application will come to... You'll have to come to us. And just kinda just want to have a quick conversation on that sidewalk. Chairman Turner and I kinda spoke on this, so... And I want to be clear, because there was two requests to the... From the owner. One was to have a discussion on this about the installation of the sidewalks and give you some details. And then one for an extension. And unfortunately, with the extension, we've kinda missed that opportunity. That ship sailed. But sidewalks, and we certainly can review that within the new application. I think more information was found out in the field. Clarity a little bit on a city project that's not extending down Laurel, just getting a sidewalk connection across the street from the Gambino's to the Legion area. And that's gonna be the limit of that project. So, with... Any conversation?
Yeah, I'll stop. You know, I've talked to the applicant on this, so I'll just say I've talked to the applicant a good bit on this in the past, you know, month. And they came by and showed me some pictures and said that there are a couple issues with it. One is moving, getting AT&amp;T to move, you know, some type of a router that's out there and a pole, and then there's a heritage tree out on their property, which, you know, AT&amp;T is gonna be difficult, plus on the heritage tree, none of the neighbors would like to lose. Two of them were out there when, you know, I walked down there and, you know, looked at the property. And then the other issue is, in the past, the restaurant there at the corner has been allowed to build into the right-of-way. So, to build a sidewalk in front of that restaurant, you would be moving six telephone poles if it were ever to connect. You'd be moving six telephone poles, part of the side of the building of Gambino's, you know, the handicapped entrance of Gambino's, the couple of other, you know, one Heritage Live Oak. And then that would ought to be to cross on a pretty dangerous curve. So, I just think that, you know, the applicant said that, you know, when... You know, he doesn't feel, and I kind of agree with them, that that sidewalk would ever be completed. And we've generally given waivers in that fruits and nuts area in the past. I think the applicant has some photos that he, you know, could show if any commissioners, you know, wanted to see.
I have a slideshow, but I had some pictures to leave with y'all for you... Y'all have to review before you vote on it.
Yeah, yeah, come on. But this is gonna just kinda... This is sorta like informal review, but if you just kinda wanna take those and just sorta thumb through and pass them along. Do you have anything that you wanted to add, Sean, while you're here?
I was gonna talk about the power pole and the historical tree that was in front of the property. And there are approximately six poles between our property and the street. And you pretty much talked about, mentioned everything I was gonna talk about as far as everything that would have to be removed to even accomplish putting a sidewalk there. Especially, I didn't think it was a very safe place to put a... Across and in the middle of an S curve. It's usually a lot of business traffic there during restaurant hours and... That was about it. You pretty much said everything I was gonna say.
Okay. But basically, in the short run, the issue would be to build a sidewalk, you'd have to get AT&amp;T to act, that you don't really have any power over. And then, in the long run, you wouldn't think that it would ever be connected.
So, I was hoping that we can make a waiver, whatever, to request for a right-of-way instead of the installation.
Do you want to pass those back to the other side?
And that... So, with the new application, that's certainly within the subdivision regulations, it allows the planning commission to grant, it's not even a waiver, but provide an easement in lieu of installation of the sidewalk.
Right.
But we would have to review that. So, it'd be great, I think, if there's a surveyor that worked on this, you know, just put those hurdles kinda on the plans informally, and we can see those and review those at the application and that. We don't have that new application, so likely be June? Would have the application back in front of you?
But commissioners, this is kind of an informal review under old business, because prior, you know, to them paying another application fee, they just wanted to see if, you know, now that this has been brought a little bit more to our attention and since there have been some changes with Fairhope's plans in that area, if any commissioners had any heartburn over allowing a waiver in lieu of the sidewalks like we do in areas where we don't require the sidewalks.
Yeah, in the fruit and nut section, there's, to my knowledge, not one sidewalk.
Yeah, we've approved in my lifetime, probably 100 two-lot subdivisions, and I don't know if a single time... I can't think of a single time that we've required sidewalks in the fruits and nuts rather than the waiver. Bluff District, same way. You know, we just recently did one over on Summit and another on Bayview with the waiver on the sidewalk. So, anyway, I just wanted, you know, give them a chance to speak before they paid another fee and, you know, roll the dice again, just in case anybody really has heartburn with this, you know, now that all the information is out. Would be a time to let them know prior to them, you know, paying another fee, wasting their money and our time, coming back again if you do have a problem with it.
With as much damage as it's gonna do to the trees and things, and the fact that there's that other project's not going through, I have no problem with it myself.
What did you say, Hunter? It's not a waiver, it's a what?
It's a choice in the review. So, sidewalk installations, to not install a sidewalk used to be a waiver process, and there was quite a few times where, you know, the waiver wouldn't get advertised on time. It would delay a project just for... To that, have to go back and meet legal requirements. So, the subdivision regulations are set up now to allow, at time of that public hearing, for planning commission to allow an easement in lieu of sidewalk installation of sidewalk.
So, we've just got two options. We can either require the sidewalk or require that they give us an easement. So, they're coming back asking that they give us an easement to where if the city ever did come up with a plan to do a sidewalk there, that the city would have an easement to go through that area.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any comments? Paul? I mean, you have any issue with it?
I mean, it would help if we had the informal review notification and know about what we're talking about.
Well, and this is not an... It's kinda brought up as old new business. And I'll tell you, I think, Mike, you correct if I'm wrong on any of the timelines here. There was communication with the other person working on the application. I think they missed a deadline last month, so they were intended to come and ask for an extension, just like many subdivision cases that come in and ask for an extension while they work on this. Didn't get that request in.
They had missed the extension request by five days.
April 2nd was the...
April 2nd was the date that it expired. So, we had gotten a letter to request an extension, and then once we got that letter and reviewed it, determined that it had... The meeting would fall past the date of expiration, which is why it's on as old new business, just as a quick discussion.
So, we brought it back as old new business, not an informal. An informal has a slightly different review process.
Any other comments or concerns about it? All right. Thank y'all very much. All right, moving on to the next item. We're in new business. We have ZC 2503. This is a request for a rezone. And for anybody here, just an FYI, rezonings are ordinances, and ordinances can only be done by city council. So, our organization will make a recommendation to the city council, who will then decide ultimately what to do. Holly has a conflict on this, so she's gonna recuse herself. And Hunter, if you want to go ahead and take it from here?
Okay, thank you. So, kinda start real quick to kinda clarify. We've spoken with about this case quite a bit, a lot of concern, and I want to touch on one that is noticeable. We have to, by state law, advertise certain ways, anything that may affect a property. So, first, zoning notifications came out for the property you see on the screen. On the left is our zoning map, and highlighted in blue is a yellow, which means that is R1, single-family zoning. That property's shown on the aerial on the right. That is what is affected right now, the way that lot sits. The intent was never, and is not supported by staff or anybody else, to zone that whole property as R1. There is a... Would tied to this be a replat to move a property line, not create any new lots or anything else. So, I think, leading with our staff report, was trying to clarify that. So, what the request is, just to be clear, is on the backside of Kingfishers to move a property line that would still leave on Nelson Road, a single-family residential home that meets R1, it's over 200 feet deep. That lot is an acre, so approximately a half an acre left. And no access to the parking on to... From Nelson Drive, no commercial fronting Nelson Drive. So, that was kinda the first level of confusion, just the way we have to advertise that property and kind of moving through. Second, this is a zoning case, and it's not site plan-driven. A PUD's the only zoning case that has a site plan attached to it. This plan was kinda submitted to us as kind of a working document. We're not reviewing this final plan. That comes up, and I know our planning commission understand that, but the zoning case is a map amendment. It only affects a... What the zoning district would be, not what the plan is. You know, kinda touch base on that in a little bit, or kind of the review processes as I clarify some questions. This would be B1. Kingfishers is currently B1. That's our least intense business district in the city. There was a little confusion here on... And I'm gonna wait, I kinda... There's been a lot of comments come in, so I'm gonna try to address those as I get toward the end. So, I'm gonna breeze through here. We're here as long as anybody needs to talk about it. But right now, B1 is a budding R1 and R3 property. They would still be a budding R1 and R3 property if this was to pass. There are incompatible uses. When there are incompatible uses, buffers are required. Again, we'll kinda get into details on that a little bit in a minute. Long-range plans, this corner is... There's... There is an error in the comp plan. And I'm gonna go back up here. Our zoning map is all red. The B1 is all red, and you missed the property lines. The team that counted property lines, they showed the red, but they said in verbiage, there's three one-story commercial buildings. The... Where Kingfishers is, was Wenzel's and Gambino's Restaurant before that. It's been B1 for quite some time, so there's not an intent to deceive anyone there. There's just, as the planning commission knows, there was some cleanup of the comp plan when we adopted it, needed to be. I think, if you look in there, Gaffer Avenue is spelled Gaber Avenue. There's some known clarification. So, I think anybody that's familiar with the area or Kingfisher's success, there's been some parking, you know, challenges. And the property owner came to us and just said, hey, I think initially it was like we'd like to rezon that to P1 parking. We didn't want to create a new lot. P1 parking has some other challenges. We certainly couldn't support that. As well, it didn't provide the parking... There wasn't enough parking available to really utilize that. So, the request kinda came in, what other options are available. And I'm gonna talk about the shared parking agreement a few times. There is, only if approved by the city council, a shared parking agreement, which would be available to more than one person in general. And what you see, the kinda site data table on the bottom, there are four businesses down there. Two are in compliance. I'm sorry, one is in compliance. Three are actually not providing the minimum parking spaces that they would if they were developing today. Those are legal non-conforming issues, and we're not gonna go tell Two Fishers and Bake Candle to change anything, but there is a goal of the zoning warrants to bring any non-conforming things into compliance that we can. So, the applicant has looked at those numbers, and to be clear, Kingfishers is not using any more than their minimum required parking spaces right now. They have 52 spaces. 52 was the minimum. As most of y'all know, they can by right have more than... 20% more than the minimum. So, they have some ability to add more parking as well. So, this is kinda the, conceptually, what we discussed. We did recommend approval of that. That would require replat and city council ultimately approving a shared parking agreement facility. I think there's been a lot of other communications and questions, and we kinda wanna jump around. We got a lot of letters. Wanna kinda jump through some of those just for clarity. I don't mean to trim any ones, just for the sake of fitting it all on one page, we kinda pulled 11 concerns and wanna touch on those individually. There was a discrepancy in the comprehensive plan, is there three or four buildings down there zoned? Zoning maps on the right, where, you know, it was, I think, an honest mistake. There was a question, and I want to reiterate this multiple times, we are not approving the site plan in a zoning change. But there was a question, the plan on there shows a 10-foot buffer. Zoning ordinance requires a 20-foot. So, and Chairman Fa... No, I'm sorry, you're not chairman tonight, but Commissioner Fa... No, you know, as a member of the tree commission, you know, within the tree ordinance, there's multiple options for buffers against incompatible land uses. They have the ability to do 10-foot, 20-foot, and then what goes within those buffers, those are options. So, it was drawn on the plan as a 10-foot buffer. This is certainly a zoning case, and see no conflicts. If the planning commission, city council say this needs to explicitly be the 20-foot buffer, that seems like a very reasonable request. I think there were some questions, and I'll put the chart here. This chart kinda gives the review procedures. So, for a zoning amendment, map amendment's what we're looking at. It's a rezoning case. Ultimately goes to city council. To review the plans at that time, that goes to the building permit. That's when we get the full detailed plans that come into compliance, and they don't get a building permit until they show those plans. Just like the previous existing Kingfishers, you know, this is kinda the landscape plan showing the buffers. They did have a 10-foot buffer there. They saved a lot of the plants that they actually wanted to get rid of and planted within the buffer, meeting our tree ordinance requirements for that buffer. There was some questions about lighting code violations. I think there was implication that there was no photometric plan at Kingfishers. This is a copy of the photometric plan that was submitted with the building permit and meets our ordinance, the specifications on the lighting materials, things like that. There's also some... Light poles are 40-foot tall, and I'm... We didn't get a lot of these today, so I'm laughing, 'cause Eric knows what I'm about to show. Eric did go out. We saw the plans, we reviewed them, all the spec sheet said 20 feet, and, you know, it was there. But Eric does have a laser that went out today, checked. We didn't know each other was doing this. So, I rode by and just happened to kinda see a car parked there. Went and looked, that's a Pacifica. You can figure out what the height of a Pacifica is. So, just copied that in, just for a simple measurement. You know, those... That's three Pacificas stacked on top of each other, about 17 and a half feet, so a little less scientific way than the laser level. But those light poles are 20 feet, meets our specification. There's 52 parking spaces, and any parking lot in the city that has 50 or more has to have 20-foot poles. Can't be taller, but to get the safety and like... And they have to meet the photometric plans, which they are. Certainly, and I do think if we... If this were to happen, I think we could discuss with a bigger buffer, that might help, but we can talk... Also, talk about different shielding. Maybe a pig fence works better, 'cause I think there's some... You know, when cars turn in, there's headlights that are, you know, glaring. I think there's other options that we can discuss. But there was also whether board of adjustment is required. There's how many years, the people that have been here longer, that building's been a restaurant for many years. We did take it to board of adjustment, because our zoning warrant says if it sits more than a year without being used, everything's gotta get re-approved. So, the use for a restaurant is what it... Why it went to boarding, went to the board of adjustment. So, no, they wouldn't have to go back. This zoning case and the shared parking agreement would be reviewed by planning commission and ultimately decided on by the city council. That would be the reviews. There was some mis... Accusations that were misrepresentation of impacted properties, and said staff report declares only the subject property is infected. That's... That was incorrect. We explicitly stated, and I get a little frustrated when people attack my staff, and Michelle did a great job in the staff report, and explicitly stated the incompatible land uses and the buffers that are required. That staff report reads that those are not shown on the plans currently, because we're not reviewing plans. They will be done as whatever conditions are in the zoning ordinance are you and/or the city council impose on this zoning change. There is a benefit that we were looking at with the rezoning of this portion of the property, there are tree protections. Right now, there are no tree protections on R1 property. I don't know if there's any trees on the... This portion of the property yet that meet the definition of a heritage tree. But if there are, there are some means to protect those or mitigate those if they're not protected. There's another concern, that there's conflicts with the comprehensive plan goals, and there was four bullet points there in red that were pointed out. We see no conflicts with those. There are... This is kinda linear sprawling is more development along the corridors, you know, this is... This is... Maybe sprawling is a subjective term, and I respect that. If things are happening next to you, I respect that that can be an impact to you, but not in the terms of the comprehensive plan where we... By the linear sprawling, is this what we meant? There are no buildings. In essence, the... If approved as recommended, the parking agreement would kinda lock up that piece of property, that portion of the property, that can only be used for shared parking amongst those businesses. So, a new building, whether a restaurant, they can't go put a new building back there or expand the building to that place. This is zone B1, so any use of B1 is a by-right use, you can do that.
Hunter, who is gonna own this ultimately if this goes through?
This would be the restaurant.
Okay. And how is it only gonna be able to be used as a parking lot?
Only... So, this portion would be tied to a shared parking agreement. And I won't say ever, but if the shared parking group... While we're bringing it as part of this rezoning case, it can be a condition. The shared parking agreement has to be approved by city council. So, if a part of this map amendment or zoning approval has a shared parking agreement, that locks in that dimensional area of the site to that's what it can be used for. Somebody can come back and get a rezoning and mitigate that.
We'll have to be rezoned. We'll have to be rezoned to.
If it winds up and is a condition of the zoning case, then somebody would have to come back through and amend that zoning.
We can, you're comfortable with that, Chris? Conditions on, conditions on zoning, I mean, that's allowable?
Yes.
Which is something unique to me is why I was asking, doesn't.
We don't have, I don't know if too many shared parking agreements we have, even though it's been in the zoning ordinance quite some time. Probably, you remember the one at the club probably across from Walmart? They had one, the Starbucks when it came in. They had a shared parking agreement with the rest of the shopping center. I don't know if there was many others. One of the goals we had when this was discussed was also how you get pedestrians. So supporting that comprehensive plan. There is a pedestrian connection from this parking lot to the four businesses. It's a little disjointed right now, so that's what the engineer's working on. Again, not what we're approving in the site plan, but that is one of the things that we were talking about. And there's no new driveways. As I mentioned before, it is our goal to also remove some of the nonconforming issues. Another concern was that Kingfisher's provided more than the minimum required parking. They have not. They're right at the minimum. They could provide twenty percent more without this approval. There was a question about signage for compact parking spaces. Most of the parking lots we see are asphalt. It's the reality of the world we're living in. And we have a requirement when you're providing more than twenty, more than the minimum, that has to be impervious surface, impervious surface, impervious surface. Most of the signs you see for compact car spacing are signs or stencils in the ground. This whole parking lot is designed to help the drainage. There was no place to put it. And frankly, we didn't, they came to us with the idea of putting the compact car notifications on the timbers instead of kind of sign clutter around. So those are out there. There's a picture on the right-hand side of where that is met. There was a question on, in 2023, the property that we're dealing with, there was a three-lot subdivision in front of the planning commission. And the question was, why was, did we feel that was best suited for low-density single-family in 2023? And why aren't we changing our minds? Not here to tell you how to vote. We just didn't concern ourselves with the zoning at a subdivision case. That application was just looking at, are they meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance as it's owned R one? I don't recall even talking about any zoning cases or what the uses were on those. It was R one. And we didn't know this was going to come to us at that time. There's a question or concerns that properties from Heard to ninety-eight, which Heard Road is here on the screen to ninety-eight, will become unsellable. Again, we just want to show a graphic of Heard would not have commercial traffic. This is actually one of the main things that was trying to, we were trying to accomplish here. There's been a lot of complaints we've received on people parking in the roads where they shouldn't be and trying to help mitigate some of that for the businesses was the goal. There's still a residential lot fronting Nelson Road. And I think that was just one of the concerns that we were going to be bringing commercial traffic through the residential side of the street. And then there was also a question on where, why does a shop, where does a shopping mall belong on Nelson Road? Maybe that was also tied into the confusion on the zoning. But a shopping mall would not be allowed. It's not allowed in B one anyway. But there are some, you know, convenience stores, other things allow, and convenience store is not a gas station under our zoning ordinance. There are some things that are allowed in B one. And it's fair to say whatever's allowed in B one, any of those businesses can come in and change businesses. That has a review, whether it's at the staff level or board of adjustment or in the case of a rezoning case, planning commission and city council or site plan review even. So now we did kind of, as some of the research today, we kind of looked at trying to figure out the light poles and wish, now that I know Eric has some cool technology, we'll do that. But one of our GIS people went out and kind of flew a draw on the site trying to get some heights. There's, we were trying to base it on the trees out there. And we kind of noticed, and there is some unassociated things happening in this area that we wanted to kind of highlight. The property, you know, kind of looking from the top down, this is Kingfisher's. They're building the parking in the back. And you can see the effort they made to provide the buffers, save trees within the parking lot. But if you look just to the right of the screen, you can see no trees, disturbed area. A rough estimate trying to overlay where the parcels are here. So roughly, this would be the area in question, you know. But you can see that image, kind of the cleared portion of the site. So kind of tell you what's happening, probably exacerbating some of the concerns. There are three residential lots there. One lot has been completely, you know, deforested. Probably half of the lot next to it. And behind Kingfisher's, probably the worst area where it was cleared, that's residentially zoned property. There are no tree protections. That is legal to do. But it took an area that had been heavily wooded for years and cleared out. So people see, probably see things they didn't. Has nothing to do with this case. It's just timing why it's happening at the same time. This is not the same owner that cleared this lot. There were some questions out there on social media. And this is again, proud Papa getting defensive. Accusations on BMPs not being done, things like that. So I just want to make sure that all those were installed. And we've had a lot of flooding. There wasn't sediment leaving the site. Just want to make sure that, you know, some of the accusations at the planning department, I think were misguided. And I want to commend my folks for doing a good job. We're not tied to any zoning case. We're not biased. We're trying to help a situation. And if ultimately this doesn't make sense, then it probably doesn't get passed. So I'm sure there's other questions and we'll be happy to read, to answer those. But I'm going to flip back up to the condition page. And or better yet, I'll kind of go to, a lot of people would like to use a map for reference. So I'll sit unless there's questions.
Are there any questions for staff at this time, commissioners? All right. In that case, I will go ahead and, well, does anybody want to speak on behalf of the applicant at this time?
Good evening. My name is Chris Lee with Lee Engineering Company. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. And I kind of, I put the site plan together and helped with the dismissal of this rezoning case. And I just wanted to, you know, kind of reiterate some of the things we heard. We're trying to be good neighbors. We're trying to provide parking that is obviously needed. Our original site plan, you know, met all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And this new one, we fully intend to do the same thing. The intent is to just do gravel back there as the original parking lot is gravel. So no, no impervious paving to be put back there. We're going to light it the way it needs to be lit to provide safety, but no spill over into the neighbors' properties. Landscape buffers as well is something that we're well aware of. You know, the ten-foot buffer is something that's allowed with fences and extra landscaping. But yes, the original is twenty feet. So we can work through that on the site plan, part of the process. I also like to say that, you know, this, there is, again, there is no access from Nelson to this parking lot. It'll be strictly through the driveway that Kingfisher has. And we're going to keep as many trees, the heritage trees, and obviously follow the tree ordinance that the city has in this new parking lot addition. And just be as good as neighbors as we can.
Y'all have not done a site plan yet. Excuse me, but based on what the slide that Hunter showed, I think I counted about thirty parking spaces and a few had question marks. And there's some question on the setback. But just kind of what's the ballpark, you know, my suminos of kind of how many parking spaces you think?
So without a boundary survey, we sketched off the GIS, but we put thirty-two more parking spots back there. And some are compact and some are full-size parking spots. But the buffers we have shown on our plan are the ten-foot buffers, which would be an eight-foot tall wooden or opaque fence and the landscaping along with it for the ten-foot buffer.
I know that would come in the future, but I was just wondering kind of what we were talking about.
Yes, sir.
Here for that.
And the thirty-two was the maximum for the parking regulations too. So it was a maximum number.
Correct. There was, and, you know, if there's some more trees that are found on the property that I wasn't aware of when I put the sketch together, obviously, we'd have to lose some parking spaces.
Normally, my guess would be you'd probably end up losing a few by the time you sketch everything out, see how it lays out. But I was just wondering what, you know, that kind of gives me what I was looking for. Thank you for that. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant at this time? All right. If we'll stay kind of upfront, what I'll do in the, I'm going to open the public hearing. And then any questions that people have, I'm just going to write them down and get you back up at the end to address them all at once.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Again, we will make a motion at the end of this meeting to the city council. And our motion will be to recommend approval or recommend denial. And ultimately, the city council, which I see we have two members in attendance here today, one in our meeting and one in the audience listening. I appreciate that, Jack. And so they'll ultimately make the decision on the ordinance. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. When you come up, if you don't mind, state your name and your address because we have got to put you in our record.
Good evening, Mr. Turner. Thanks for letting me address the group here. My name is Steve Delamore and I live at six oh three eight Nelson Drive. I don't know if you can get that map back up. I could show you my house, but it's really not completely necessary. I'm the second white house in, off of scenic ninety-eight on Nelson. We are in opposition to the zoning change from going from residential to commercial. That part of Nelson is very ecologically fragile. There are wetlands in that area. There's lowlands as Nelson kind of, you know, comes down from Heard towards the bay. And, you know, in our opinion, disrupting the topography will just further degrade the drainage as the water flows towards the bay. I remember being here back in two thousand and eighteen. And Eric knows me well. We built our house and there were, gosh, at least a half dozen requirements from as simple as not blocking an easement to planting certain types of grasses, installing a half dozen drains and catch basins, a wetland delineation survey, plus additional onsite meetings with Eric and his team. So our personal opinion is the last thing that Nelson needs is to be zoned commercial and have a parking lot added on the back of that lot. You know, I'm a capitalist. I believe people should be able to, you know, do things, you know, financially with their assets. But, you know, we just don't think that is a good faith. You know, it's not a neighborly thing to do. It's just, that area does not need a parking lot. I don't know how many spots are going in there, but I think you said fifty more, thirty more. And then, but they're not maximizing what they have. So what's the net gain? We talking ten spots maybe if they used everything else they had? So if they did maximize, how many more could they get currently? So that would be a question. So let's just say it's, they could get ten or twelve more without doing anything. And then they're going to come in with thirty. So they're only gaining twenty. I just, we just don't think that's a good, good decision. You know, and then the last thing I'll say is having a parking lot, you know, in a neighborhood, you know, lighting, the noise, the trash. I mean, it's a nuisance already down there. And, you know, I wish Kingfisher all the success. But when they were occupying the chive-talking parking lot, it was a disaster. And, you know, it's just going to now be in the back of their lot next to people that are building houses. I wonder if that gentleman that's building a house bought that lot knowing that there was going to be a parking lot. So I guess that would be a question too. That's none of my business, but I don't know if that's good faith in that regard. But that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Delamore.
Good evening, commissioners. And my name is Hames Snedeker. I live at sixteen six one seven Polo Club Drive. I used to live at sixty-two eleven Nelson Road up the street from this. But I'm here on behalf of my law partner and business partner, Ray Hicks, who owns the corner residence just to the south of this rezoned parcel and speak on his behalf in opposition to this. I think just from a logistics standpoint, anytime you open rezoning residential to commercial, I think you set a standard. And I think in this situation, it's going to open the door for this situation to occur in other parts of Fairhope. I mean, not to belittle any of the other comments that Mr. Delamore made, but the, just the policy and the procedure behind it is going to be dangerous for the rest of the city. But in agreeing with Mr. Delamore, parking lots are a nuisance. They always are. There's no way to fix that. I think in the event that you guys were to recommend this to the city council and it were to go forward, I'd like to explore what Hunter was saying about some sort of, I guess we would call it like a specific use zoning, where there would be, if it was to be rezoned commercial, that zoning would be limited to a parking lot with all kinds of restrictions, buffers, size, water ret, water retainer regulation, stormwater runoff, whatever, where it was tied to that, to where at any time, should that use change, that it would revert back to the residential zoning. I've seen that happen in multiple jurisdictions where we've developed where that specific use for commercial is tied to that parcel. And once it's done, once it's no longer a parking lot, it would resort back to residential. So you have, I think, the biggest consideration here is, you know, Dr. Hicks lives in that house. He bought that house not knowing that there would be eventually a commercially zoned parcel all the way around him. It's going to devalue, it will devalue the other residents. And I think it sets a very, very dangerous precedent for the rest of the city, whether you're Gambinos or anybody else along the road. You can buy residential with the hope or approach the planning commission and hopefully get a recommendation to rezone it commercial. I think there's other opportunities too for, and I wish Kingfisher success also for them to work out a joint parking agreement that doesn't necessarily involve a new rezoning. I mean, I know they're shuttling people down from the, what's it called? The Old Supper Club piece of property. So I think there's an opportunity for them to maybe create some other, some other alternatives for the parking situation because I think we can all agree something needs to be done with it. It can be dangerous at times. But I think there's, I'd like to see, and I know Ray would like to see, a lot more effort made by the applicant to come up with other solutions rather than just jumping to a rezone right away. Because once it's rezone commercial, it's, you know, it's kind of, the horse has left the barn. So that's, that's our biggest concern. And I'll let, I know he'll get another bite at the apple should this go to the city council. And I'll let all the other smarter people behind me come up with all the technical issues with the plan. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sure, of course. Are these the same or are they different ones? Okay, sure.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Bryant McKeller. I've been watching these meetings probably more than anybody. I'm the only guy on Facebook at home that watches them every month. But I do appreciate you guys' time. And I do appreciate you guys going through a lot of the questions. Most of those questions were the ones that I sent over. I'm not going to repeat them since they were already addressed. And whether or not I was happy with the answers, it's just my opinion. So move on to something real quick. I've sent you guys pictures of standing in my driveway, looking three hundred feet across to the parking lot with the lights. Those lights might only be twenty feet tall. But, you know, I didn't have a tape measure in the middle of the night to go up there and measure myself, but they feel forty feet tall. If you ever watched the movie E.T. before, you know, when he lands in the woods with a spaceship and it all lights up? That's kind of what it looks like at night. We're in the real estate and mortgage business. And to read that it does not affect the surrounding areas from a property value standpoint, I tell you when I lay in my bed at night and the ceiling's glowing, I feel like that's a negative. If I were to sell my property now with those lights, you know, it's a negative. Now you're proposing to move those lights one hundred feet closer to my bedroom window? It's clearly. It's clearly a derogatory effect. I just kind of want to touch on something real quick. I know we mentioned the setbacks are only required to be ten feet. And I, I went through your parking ordinance. It says, "Any district where commercial industrial use abuts to residential use shall be screened by wall fence or solid appearance of a tight evergreen hedge, not less than six feet and twenty feet landscape buffer." This is sections three dot three under screening and landscaping. Clearly, this is an incidence where residential meets commercial and we're even trying to push the commercial further into the residential. I can tell you what time the garbage gets picked up. It gets picked up at three thirty in the morning and they, they bang the dumpster every night. So if I was King Fisher, I'd probably keep the dumpster as far away from the restaurant as possible, which means you're going to put it right out in the middle of all the residential. So, um, the lights stay on all night and the, and the garbage picks up three thirty in the morning and, uh, they're open pretty late too. Two, three, four o'clock in the morning, those lights are still on. So I appreciate your time and I'm not going to go any further, just to say that I'm completely opposed to the rezoning of the R one, um, recently family subdivided parcel into B one for a parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else wish to speak to this item?
Good evening. My name is James Pittman. I live at three thirteen Woodbridge Drive. I've lived in Fairhope or the Eastern Shore for fifty two years and I've practiced land use and regulatory law in Ballin County for twenty six of those years. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Hicks, who owns the parcel that is a historic residence west and south of the proposed rezoning. Uh, he's an eighty year old dentist that retired here, though he does commute back to Dothan two days a week to practice dentistry still. A few things and, and I apologize if I jump around. In my opinion, this application violates your zoning ordinance. It's interesting to me, my understanding is this parcel is part of a family subdivision that the applicant, Ms. Moffett, obtained approval for some time fairly recently. That exemption contemplates family usage. Clearly now, we know that is not the case. A lot has been sold to the east that has been deforested, as Mr. Simmons said. This lot is to the west of a residence that Ms. Moffett applies for a partial rezoning, which in my opinion is a PUD request. She owns one lot that she seeks to rezone the north one third of to commercial. And then acknowledges in her application, it's under contract to King Fisher Restaurant. That restaurant property is owned by a company called Fifty LLC, five zero LLC. I've never been able to get the Secretary of State to approve a name like five zero LLC. It is, I cannot find any information on the principles of that entity. It's not disclosed in the Ballin County records, the Secretary of State records. And so I'm concerned as a citizen of Ballin County and a, uh, someone that grew up and, and still lives in Fairhope, why someone would not want anyone to know who they are. Mr. Turner and Mr. Boone have been here as long and maybe even longer than I have and I truly echo what people have said about King Fisher. I hope it the best of success, but all of us that have lived here for a very long period of time, remember things like Square Rigor Inn, Twin Oaks, multiple seafood restaurants, at least a dozen that I can recall, that all had a fantastic year long honeymoon curve like the restaurants I represent and like every prior operator there has, has had. They've all gone out of business. The joint user agreement that's included in your packet is really not a joint user agreement. A joint user agreement would contemplate a long term obligation by all the parties to maintain the subject parcel, uh, to your specifications. So like with a subdivision, typically you would require a property owners association that would exist for at least twenty years and then it would have automatically renewable successive twenty year periods that the owners would be obligated to maintain detention ponds, parking areas, common areas, all of those things. This is a license and if you look at the last page, it says it is a license that expires automatically if Fifty LLC, whoever they are, shuts down or goes out of business. It's not a joint license either because the other parties have no obligation whatsoever. And, and I know Joe Courtney and Courtney and Morris, uh, they've been here just as long as I have and they're going to be here for a long darn time and they're, they're responsible members of our community. They're a great business, but they have no obligation whatsoever under this license agreement to maintain this parking area. And looking at aspects of your zoning ordinance, and again, I'm a little puzzled because I don't know of a legal right to partially rezone a parcel. Think the applicant's having it both ways. She, her application is to partially rezone the north one third of her parcel, but then she acknowledges she's going to turn around and sell it to the King Fisher operator that may be Fifty LLC. It may be some other operator and the restaurants I represent, rarely if ever does the owner of the realty also operate the license. They may be affiliated, they may be not. And so my fear is, is that King Fisher may go out of business like every other restaurant user that has ever been on this property. And then we're left with a situation where we have a partially zoned piece of property. We have a joint user agreement that isn't a joint user agreement. In the fine print, which I read and I hope you all don't unless you have insomnia tonight, it's a license agreement that no one has an obligation to utilize or maintain other than Fifty LLC, who we don't know who they are. And so, um, to echo, uh, Judge Snedeker's, um, concerns, um, you know, my fear is, is that we set a dangerous precedent. I'll try to be, to wrap up in looking at your zoning ordinance, uh, which this would fall under, there are no parking requirements addressed that I can see or things like a vegetative swale that would, um, would minimize, uh, runoff. I know that there's been talk of it being an, a, a permeable or pervious surface, but we all know even with rock or crushed concrete or whatever the case may be, with constant use and compaction, it does not drain as well as, as green space. I drove out there on my way here. There's multiple oak trees on the property. There are long leaf pine trees that make the ones in Noel Park look like saplings. So, uh, these are all aspects of your zoning ordinance that are not addressed in any way as part of the zoning application. There's no sur- surface drainage information, um, no drainage plan, no contour map, no erosion and settlement control plan, no operations and maintenance plan, other than the joint user agreement, which I won't, uh, belabor again. The, uh, comment was made from planning staff that in their opinion, this would alleviate nonconformities. I would submit to you all that this would create nonconformities. It would create a scenario where the north one third of a R one designated lot would then become B one. My client, whose house you can hardly see because of the trees and who is already substantially negatively impacted by the lighting. And to Mr. McKeller's point, I've been out there at night too. I, it is shockingly bright. I, I don't know why that would be used other than it was the cheapest way to go because there could be less impactful, much more aesthetically pleasing and, and less obnoxious for use of a better word, uh, lighting packages that could be used. So I would submit to you all that it would create nonconformities. It would open Pandora's box because now you've created a precedent in the city where not only would you allow B one parking lot zoning immediately adjacent to R one uses, you would allow partial B one parking lot zoning where someone could have their cake and eat it too and, and apply for, to rezone a portion of their property. The last thing that I saw, and perhaps it would be alleviated if Fifty Cent, Fifty LLC, excuse me, Fifty Cent, I think they're a rapper and I don't listen to rap music. Fifty LLC, um, does it, but, but there's no legal access. So what I would anticipate is after a family subdivision, which we now know was made in bad faith, which you may or may not know, you have the ability to rescind based on the misrepresentation that it was going to be made for family use, is now being sold to a developer. And then I would anticipate you're going to have another re-subdivision request to partially subdivide the north one third to B one while leaving the south two thirds, um, residential. So with that said, on behalf of Dr. Hicks, the dentist, I would respectfully request your recommendation of denial to the council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, James. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? We'll do one more person, then we'll move on.
Hello, my name is Dan Zerbs and my wife, Robert, and I live, uh, directly, uh, west of, uh, McKeller. And so when the trees went out on the lot, the empty lot, um, the, the light is bleeding into, you know, everywhere and the noise as well is evident, um, at night. It's, it's loud there and, um, I just agree that I don't agree with, uh, re-subdividing this into commercial space. We expected it to be a residential street. It's busy enough with the traffic and, um, we just disagree wholeheartedly. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, um, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. We'll come back up. We had a number of questions. Um, one is, has any kind of a wetland delineation been done on that?
Chairman, let me, let me step in real quick to answer a couple before. This was not a family subdivision. There was an actual planning commission case in twenty twenty three for the subdivision of the three lots. So full blown minor subdivision, there was a wetland delineation done then, no wetlands were on site.
Okay. All right, and then you had.
We don't have options.
You had the question, can any spaces be increased in the current parking lot?
No, sir. Uh, we're saving the existing trees and we even maxed out the number of compact parking spots to forty percent or as close to forty percent as we could get, which is like in the high thirties somewhere. I don't remember the exact number, but the fifty two was the, the highest number of parking spots we could fit on their property, even with, uh, doing the ten foot buffer, um, on the existing parking lot.
Okay. And a lot of questions have been coming up on the buffer. Of course, that, this is a zoning issue now.
Correct.
And we would have that to be looked at later.
As far as, as the partially zoned piece of property, um, the intent is for a replat conditional of the rezoning. So this would be one partial, uh, the King Fisher would own both pieces and would be one partial, be a common lot line move.
Okay. All right. And then, um, there were some questions about maintenance plans and the licensee for, uh, the parking lot, so.
That is, um, that's a lot of legal things that I'm not privy to, but, um, you know, when up, you know, I don't know if that's, when drainage we require in a subdivision and operations and maintenance plan for how that's long term maintained. The King Fishers, you know, there, there was drainage problems going back through history. I actually went out today, I was surprised at how little water was standing out there. I think they've done a good job. There has been underground drainage put in a lot of the parking. It doesn't have an O and M plan like required by our, uh, subdivision regulations, but certainly the system's in place and at time of building permit, that is reviewed and, and checked. But, but we, we don't have a O and M plan for that.
We have one.
You, sorry, just to not misspeak, from the building, do you have anything required from?
No, I mean, well, you're talking about a gravel parking lot that doesn't have a detention pond that doesn't have those issues. So would that, I mean, my assumption is if you do not have those things, that that wouldn't necessarily require an O and M plan. And I will also say, I mean, I've been going out to that site since I first started with the city in two thousand, when it was Gambino's and then it was Wensels and then it was others. In terms of the drainage, I was out there twice today. And in terms of the drainage in that parking lot, that is the best that I have seen in the twenty four years I've been around that property. Back when that was owned by Gambino's, if some remember, there was a block wall on the backside and it was paved on a heavy rain and I met with owners over there on multiple times and I, I met with Mr. Delamore and there was actually someone who owned that sixty eighty one Nelson before, I'm assuming now that's Dr. Hicks that owns that. Is that the correct address?
They were right under at one point.
Yeah, and, uh, Mr. Yule. And we had a lot of dealings with him because he owned, he had a parcel of land where water was coming out of that existing parking lot, heading towards Nelson, going under the road towards Mr. Delamore's property. So, you know, that's just in looking at the, the parking as, as it is, we're not going to require an O and M plan unless there's something in zoning or any other for a fully gravel, fully pervious parking area. Operations and maintenance.
Operations and maintenance. Would there, and one person asked about the dumpster, um, possibly being moved out there to be further away from the building?
So I don't see a reason for, uh, relocating the dumpster. I mean, it's close to the, to the building where it needs to be. So when they take the trash out of the kitchen, it's right there. There'd be no reason to relocate it any further away from the restaurant.
Yeah, it's tucked by the building, not the property.
All right, commissioners, do y'all have any questions for the applicant at this time? Well, in that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Chris, one thing that, um, Dr. Snedeker mentioned was, um, having some type of a way that this would be a condition. I'm assuming that the way we're doing this, it could only be used for parking for this property. Cause I was thinking, I, I like the idea of what he said about having it where it could only be used for this, um, usage. But okay, i- is it not like that though? I mean, I mean, this has to be a parking for this area with the agreement correct?
Well, I agree with Mr. Pittman that it is a revocable license. So the agreements, the agreement, the shared parking agreement can be revoked at any time based on the terms of the agreement as it's currently written. But to your point, you have the right to condition approval of rezoning subject to certain conditions and obviously you're making a recommendation to city council. To clarify, this would not be a partially residential, partially B one lot. The implication is if, if, if it goes through, that the, it would be a subdivision or a re- replat of the lot line where this, the red that's shown on the picture, the dark red becomes part of the B one lot, leaving the remnant yellow lot, R one, which still is conforming with the zoning ordinance. So you'd have one long B one lot where the King Fisher restaurant is and then a shorter R one yellow lot, the remnant lot. And, and my understanding is based on the requirements of what's out there, it would meet the zoning as it is currently for R one. So, um, you can condition, it, it, condition the use to the parking as, as part of B one if council approves it. And then if that were to change, they'd have to come back and get a rezoning application before city council to change that area.
Anything else southern the parking for that?
And just to, to clarify a little bit, um, the, the shared parking agreement is not the final language, you know, that, that was kind of the draft we've been working on through there. Uh, that was, we're really working toward the council meeting before that's final since that, that would have to be approved then. But certainly if the planning commission wants to see what the final draft of that is, we can work on that and come back if that's the request. I do like the idea of the revisionary kind of clause, but I don't think we can accomplish that, um, at least per the shared parking agreement and, and condition, because we'd never intended this to be, uh, parking on residential being used that way. It would, the, the replat would happen, um, essentially if it were to be passed by council, the replat would happen before it advertised, uh, to make the change in the, in the geographic and, or, or the map amendment, if you will. And then that would kind of be locked in. We can explore the revisionary clause, but I, I can't speak to that particular component.
Well, if it's absorbed into the main lot, I mean, it wouldn't be as. Well, if it's absorbed into the main lot, I mean, it wouldn't be as necessary. And if it was revised, then you'd have a little R1 pocket lot with no real access except through B1, which would be kind of awkward. I'm kind of, you know, juxtaposed on this one. I've been on this board for a long time, and I've known some of the sins of the past of that, not with the current restaurant folks, they've been top-notch on what they've seemed to do, but on some of the prior, you know, some of the things they've done in the middle of the night and, you know, just kind of that sort of end arounds and, and getting, you know, that, that size at, at that point, you know, it's a little bit frustrating. But on the other hand, you know, my 83 and 84-year-old parents, you know, parked down at Chive Talking, and we're walking across the gravel and potholes and neighbors' yards going to that restaurant, and I've seen, you know, a dozen cars a day, you know, over there at Chive Talking or down this way or up the road. And, you know, as much as I, I hate the lights and like to look at the stars and, and all, I just, you know, just the public safety concerns me if somebody's falling, breaking a hip, breaking an ankle, or worse yet, you know, getting hit by a car out there. Not that I really like getting here that way, but I don't know, I just think there's a, a biting safety issue that I get kind of concerned about in that property. Which, any other thoughts?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
Irregardless of all the what-ifs, what-ifs that might happen in all this, the changing of a zoning, zoning, I mean, of a zoning is a choice. It is not required. There's no law that says you have to do it. And it's been my belief that when you are going to do a changing of a zoning with the surrounding people, they must get along. If they don't get along, I'll never be for the changing of the zoning. These people have moved in this property and moved around here under one obligation, and now they want to get the rug pulled out from them and change the zoning to it. I don't think that's right nor fair.
Not all. Wait for somebody to make a motion. I'll make a motion to deny. I've got a motion to recommend denial to the City Council.
I second that.
And I have a second. All in favor to recommend the City Council to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye.
Aye.
And aye. Anybody other than Erica and myself vote for opposition? So it would be five to two in opposition for the recommendation to City Council. And that would be a negative recommendation. All right, thank you very much. Any other older new business? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.